Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me welcome you to Candidates Night presented by the Government Affairs Council of Topeka County Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we will be hearing from the candidates running for the Sonora City Council and the Topeka County Board of Supervisors for District One, District Four, and District Five. So please give your full attention to these candidates who have taken time out of their busy days to take part in our informative educational evening. My name is Michael Ayala, and I will be your moderator and emcee this evening. Allow me to introduce our panelists. Margaret Davis, past Chair of the Board and Government Affairs Council Chair and Manager of the Junction Shopping Center. B.J. Hanson, News Director at AM 1450 and FM 102.7 KVML. And Lynn Riddle, Editor at the Union Democrat. Our timers are Kerry Tweedy, Chair of Marketing for the Topeka County Chamber of Commerce and Community Relations Director at Skyline Place. Jim Garaventa has been attending our Government Affairs Council and Transportation Committee meetings and is on the Sonora City Council. We would like to thank Clark Broadcasting and AM 1450 and FM 102.7 KVML for producing a live broadcast of tonight's event. Cable Channel Eight is also videotaping this event for broadcast at a later date. The candidates have all been informed of today's agenda and will be seated by a random drawing of numbers. I will read a very brief, unedited introduction provided by each candidate, followed by the candidates who will each have a minute and 30 seconds to make their opening statement. When responding to questions, the first to answer will be seat number one, in this case, Connie Williams, City Councilwoman. The first candidate to respond to a question will have one minute and 30 seconds to answer. The remaining candidates responding to the same question will have one minute. At the end of the question-answer period, each candidate will then have two minutes to make a closing statement in the order explained. Our timers will help the candidates keep track of time. They will be able to see the timer and the remaining time. I should point out, ignore the H1, that's a setting. You want to watch those other numbers to the right. At the end of your allotted time, I will urge the candidates to wrap up your response promptly. There are index cards in the back of the room for the audience to write their questions and submit it to one of the runners in the room. And I think they're around, you've got to raise your hand, and Terry Brockmire, if you would stand or raise your hand. Your question may make it to the panel, but please keep in mind the panel members already have several questions before them, and time must be available for an additional question to be posed to the candidates seated at the dais. Finally, some admonitions. Remember, the mics are hot. This is a family-friendly show, no cursing or rude language. Candidates, this is not a one-on-one, so address the audience and the panelists in the room and those listening from their homes. If a one-on-one does occur, the aggrieved candidate will have 30 seconds to rebut. If it continues, the offending candidate will lose 20 seconds for each offense; the aggrieved candidate will gain 20 seconds for each occurrence. Normally, when I say that, everybody plays by the rules. We stay on schedule. Now let us begin with a few words from our Registrar of Voters, Debbie Batista.
Good evening. As Mike said, my name is Debbie Batista, and I'm the Registrar of Voters for Topeka County. And I thought I would give out some dates and some information, not only for the candidates running, so that they can use it in their campaigning and/or for the public. May 23rd is the last day for someone to register to vote. One would register to vote if one is going to be 18 on or before June 7th, which is Election Day. One can do that at www.sos.ca.gov, which is the Secretary of State's office. One can do it by coming into my office. One can do it by going to the Topeka County Elections webpage. And if you have moved, you have changed your name, especially if you have moved in the last 60 days, 90 days, two years, you might want to re-register to vote because you may not be in the area that the candidates that would represent you are in. For example, if you lived in Strawberry, but you moved to the city of Sonora, you're going to want to vote for some of the candidates in front of you right now versus not having anybody on the ballot to vote for because they're going to represent you and represent the city that you live in. The other thing to remember, of course, is June 7th is Election Day. The other thing that's really new for this election is now postmarks count. So as long as the vote-by-mail ballot that a voter has is postmarked June 7th, we have three days in which to receive them and count them. So we don't need to drop off all the ballots at the polling places. One can mail in the ballots on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and just make sure that they come to my office. The other thing is that we're putting lots of information, and it's usually pretty current, on the Elections webpage. So if you want to go to www.tolomecountyallspelledout.ca.gov backslash elections with an S, not only on Election Night can you see the results just as we post them, which we usually post about five or six different times, but you can go out there fairly soon, read the candidate's statements, look at your ballots, look at any kind of information that pertains to this election and the next elections coming up. So, thank you.
Right, so I'm going to introduce each Sonora City Council candidate. These are about 30 seconds. At the conclusion of my introductory statements on behalf of the candidates, we'll start with Connie with an opening statement, but I'll come back to that. Connie Williams was first elected to the Sonora City Council in 2012. Prior to being elected, Connie served on the Topeka County Planning Commission for three and a half years. Connie has served on the Boards of Gold Rush Charter School, Give Someone a Chance, Motherlode Community Center, and Stage Three Theater. As a council member, Connie represents the city of Sonora on several boards and commissions, including the League of Cities Administrative Policy Committee. Now Bill Canning has demonstrated his commitment to Sonora in government, public, and community services for 10 years. He's a vocal and active supporter of Vision Sonora from its origin as a beautification project through the most recent $1.3 million grant award to continue that legacy. A proponent of business and tourism for economic growth, he advocates that a safe, beautiful city will attract business, visitors, and be the pride of our community. Enhancing our community, culture, and our historic downtown will secure a better future for Sonora and keep her the queen of the southern minds. For Matt Hawkins, believes that a prosperous and thriving Sonora can only happen when we work together. Matt has served on the Sonora City Council, the Sonora Elementary School Board, and the Sonora Chamber of Commerce Board. Matt understands the issues at hand and will work hard to represent the people. Matt has been managing businesses for the past 20 years and has a passion for serving people. Currently, Matt is an Assistant Store Manager with Walmart. Matt resides in Sonora with his wife Marie and their four children, Nathan, Benjamin, Zachary, and Juliana. And Mark Plummer is a 55-year-old business owner and timberfaller who lives with his family in downtown Sonora. At first sight, he knew Sonora was the place he wanted to make his home, and he's been a homeowner here for 21 years. He has served his community for 20 years on the Friends of the Library Board and for the last six years on the Sonora Elementary School Board. He believes that government should serve all its citizens in the fairest, most efficient, and cost-effective way possible, and he pledges nothing less than that. With that, we'll start with Connie Williams with your opening statement of a minute and a half.
Thank you very much. And I want to say thank you first to the Topeka County Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event and to all of you who are here in attendance and listening and watching. The city of Sonora, in my opinion, has an obligation to provide the community with a clean, safe, and secure environment in which to live and work and to preserve and promote its historic character. Well, I'm not the only one that believes that. That's actually the city of Sonora's vision statement that was adopted in 1998. And the Sonora City Council has an obligation to make sure the city of Sonora lives up to that statement. But that's not all. Something that is left out of that statement is economic development. If we don't have economic development in our community, then the city cannot continue to provide the services that the citizens and the tourism, the people who come here as tourists, expect us to have. So I would like to be re-elected to the Sonora City Council so that I can continue the hard work that this council needs to do in order to provide what is expected by the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Bill Canning, City Councilman.
Yes, good evening. I think I'm on. I'm on. Thank you very much for having this function this evening. You know, it's been a real struggle for the city in the last three years with the redevelopment money has been taken away by the government. We've lost a lot of different funds that came through the government, so it's been really tough. With redevelopment money gone, that wiped out about a little over $2 million. So the only way this city's going to grow, there's not any money left to do any discretionary projects. We have to grow this economically from, the businesses have to be stronger, which that's what we all want, and therefore then they'll be paying more taxes, and that's the only way we're going to get discretionary funds to do anything in this city. The grants have pretty well dried up. We keep trying, but they're just not there right now. So, and that's pretty much I have to say.
And Matt Hawkins.
Okay. Hi, I'm Matt Hawkins. I need to thank the Chamber, Topeka County Chamber of Commerce, for hosting this. Many people are asking why I'm running. I mean, I'm obviously a busy father and do a lot of business with Walmart. You know, I think it's time for generations to start changing hands. I think that the council now has done a very good job, that's one of the things that came up in our last discussion. Council's done a very good job of balancing the budget. Economics is a big part of our city, and that's what we're missing right now. I'm a big champion of business. Anyone that knows me knows that. I'm a big champion of buying local and supporting local. I would like to see more police on our streets. That can only happen if we balance the budget. I do not believe in going in debt. We've seen what that's done to other cities in California. I do support the Vision Sonora project. I do like it, but I will say this, I think that unfortunately there's been a lot of detraction from the Vision Sonora on different things. So I'd like to really get down to business, working on what we can agree together and do together first. There are three spots open for the Sonora City Council. I'm asking to be one of them. There are four good people, in my opinion, up here running, so I'm just asking to be one of the three spots elected. Thank you.
And Mark Plummer.
Good evening, and thank you to the Chamber for this forum. What I would like you to learn and remember about me are the following three things. I'm committed to public service and our local sense of community. I've already volunteered for 20-plus years with the Friends of the Library and on the Sonora School, Sonora Elementary School Board. We just refinanced our school bond and saved the taxpayers almost half a million dollars. Yay! As a timberfaller, I know better than anyone else on this dais how hard it is to earn a dollar and how hard it can be to pay taxes, fees, and the increasing costs of government. I promise to spend your tax money with greater care than I spend my own money, and I'm pretty thrifty. I resent bureaucratic overreach, even for the noblest of reasons, and will block it as much as possible with one vote and a voice on the council. Naturally, I support our fire and police departments, balanced budget, et cetera, but I especially want our business, local businesses, to know that they also have my strongest support. Business must thrive for our community to prosper. Local business pays Sonora's budget, improves our quality of life, and draws tourists. A vote for me is a vote for simple, modest, and effective government. Thank you.
Thank you all. With that, we will start the questioning with Margaret Davis.
And Connie, you're first. What is the biggest issue or problem facing Sonora? What is your solution to the issue or problem?
Wow, the biggest problem for the city of Sonora, it's always going to be finances. It seems that the state continually takes dollars away from the city because they believe that they can use it better than we can. If all of the tax dollars that were generated here, whether it's sales tax, property tax, gas tax, et cetera, we could sustain ourselves, but it's an ongoing situation where the state continues to take money away from us. And the only way that we can get it back is they have some kind of a project that we can go after a grant, go after grant dollars. So in reality, what we're doing is, it's going to the state, and we have to go beg to get it back. That will always be a challenge for a small rural community. When we go after grant dollars, we have to fight against the, and compete against the larger metropolitan areas, so it's much harder for a rural community. We have to stand up, and we have to be heard at the state level, that the rural communities have to get their fair share so that we can continue to provide the services that we need to be providing, whether it's safety, whether it's road maintenance, whatever it is for the community.
Thank you, Connie. Bill, do you want the question again?
No, I got it. I got it. What's facing the city is very simple. There is not enough funds to do everything necessary to run the city. And I've told Matt this on our last Candidates Night that they were out. We do have a balanced budget. We have strengthened the reserves. We have over 50% in reserves of our budget, which is, that's a big reserve when you look at a budget. But then you're looking at our budget, it's only $4.5 million, so. But that's being said, the only way we're going to strengthen this is to, to this economy is these businesses to get stronger and more people, tourism, and the economy gets better where people come in and spend money and grow these businesses, which then they'll spend money and turn around. That's the only, that's the only avenue you're going to see for discretionary funds to help the fire department, the police department. I mean, we're down, I think, two or three people in Public Works, and they've been getting by for years, so.
All right, thank you. Matt, do you need the question?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Jobs. Jobs are, I mean, we can talk about city government all day long, but jobs, what funds city government? Taxpayers. I know a lot of my generation, since I have been living in Topeka County, has left the county. My generation meaning 1965 to 1979, and now we have millennials leaving the county, maybe going to get an education, which is great, but they're not coming back. We have to retain those generations. That's what funds the city, that's what funds the county, and we need to find ways to retain those jobs. I do believe that the Topeka County Economic Development has done a good job in reaching out and getting businesses back in the county, but there needs to be more. How to do that, you know, I've got several ideas, but it takes a lot of people working together.
Thank you, Matt. Mark, do you need the question again?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's going to be economic development and how to encourage our businesses in such a way that they can grow and prosper. Without an increasing tax base, we're never going to have more money for the city without going hat-in-hand begging for it, which is an iffy proposition at best. And how one encourages that, I mean, yeah, lots of possibilities. Not having been on the council yet, I don't know which ones are impossible and which ones are available, like tax credits, other forms of encouragement.
I would ask you to speak up so we can hear and it gets in the further questioning, so we can just keep that in mind. And also silence your cellphones, please. They do get picked up by the mics and the speakers, so thank you. With that, B.J. Hanson, our wonderful radio station.
Very good. My question is in regards to Vision Sonora. When it's been discussed at past City Council meetings, it's been both praised and criticized. There seems to be mixed opinions. So Vision Sonora, is it a good plan, and are there specific things that could be changed and altered?
I'll start out by saying that, first of all, your question is, is it a good plan? It's the community's plan. This plan was put together by the community over a week's period of time, input from the community, so it's their vision, not the city council's vision. The city council adopted it in December of 2013, and therefore, it's the city council's responsibility to move this plan forward. Will it end up looking like it does in the document that was printed? Probably not. There are four subcommittees in Vision, under the Vision Sonora Committee. One of them is the Design Committee. That Design Committee came up with a solution or a design for the new bathrooms that would be created in downtown Sonora. This is one of the things that the community members said that we needed. The pictures that you see in the Vision Sonora Plan don't look anything like what the committee has come up with. It blends, the final design blends with the community. So is it a good plan? It's a good plan because other cities have gone out and revitalized their cities. They've sparkled them up, they've spruced them up, they've added to the community, to the desirability of utilizing the downtown area by residents and visitors and bring more people in there, in here, so that when people go home, they'll say, "That's a great place to go. You need to go see Sonora."
And Bill Canning?
No, I don't need the question again, but Vision Sonora, understand, it's not, everybody looks at the plan, that's a roadmap. That is just exactly what it is. And I wanted to correct Connie, not correct her, but let her just, it was over a year's time it went through the process. It was the emerging week that lasted for five days, which then really spearheaded the design. We're only looking at what the public has asked us to do and find, but each one of those elements still has to go through its own planning and its own way to find out if it actually works, and the public input, and it's the public's plan. So, and there's a lot of misinformation out there. I think it's hard when you, it is not, everybody looks at that plan, they go, "That's it", and that's what they're doing. No, that's not what we're doing. That's what we were asked by the public to do, to at least go in that direction.
Matt Hawkins.
You know, being a former council member, I remember sitting down with Bill, and Bill's got these ideas, and you know, I thought they, they're great. I can see why there would be some contention because there is some misinformation out there about Vision Sonora. I think one of the biggest things I keep hearing is about parking. We're not losing parking, even if we do the idea of doing bull bouts, we're not losing parking because parking will be created elsewhere. That's in the plan, that's a fact. You know, walk downtown anytime, and if you don't trip at least once going from the red church down the grocery outlet, I'd be surprised. That's one of the big things I was on board for with the Vision Sonora plan was to fix, repair the sidewalks, and to get things more aesthetically pleasing. So I'm all for Vision Sonora, but again, I want to see things accomplished in a way that we can all agree upon them.
And Mark Plummer.
I strongly support Vision Sonora, insofar as I'm familiar with it. I have not been involved with any of the changes or progress. It is exciting to see the renderings and the proposals, and I can easily see it making us outshine or outsparkle Murphy's. People often ask, "What has Murphy's done?" Well, somewhere along the line, somebody came up with a plan in there, and they've developed it so that it's a destination that people want to go to for a day or a weekend. We can do the same here.
And Lynn, when you ask a question, we're going to go to Bill Canning on this one.
Okay. You've talked a lot about economic development and jobs. What about homelessness? Such a big concern here, as it is around the country. What responsibility does local government have and this particular city council have in helping to solve this problem?
Well, we've had a lot of the church groups come in, and the pastors, and they look at the council, and they've been dealing with it for six, eight, nine, 10 years, and they came in just, I don't know, it was maybe six, eight months ago, and they said, "You guys have to come up with a plan to take care of this." I don't think it's, I think we're there to work with them to come up with a plan. I don't think government can come up with a plan to get itself out of a paper bag. So, it's tough. It really is, because there is people that are truly homeless and need a hand up. There is a lot of people that don't want that hand up. There's a lot of people that are mental health problems, and they're very happy with where they're at. It's extremely a hard subject. I'm not going to sit here tonight and tell you I have the answers because I don't. Do we have to look at it? Absolutely. But I think we need to look at it with, as a group, and I know that Connie's been on a task force. They've tried, very tough to come up with. Nobody wants it in their backyard. I don't know, I don't have the answer. And we surely don't have the funds, and that's the hardest thing. You can't build anything without some kind of funds. I wish, you know, it's not Monopoly money where we can just go, as my daughter used to say, "Well, just go to the machine, it comes right out of the machine," when I told her we didn't have any money. Thank you.
So, in this, with this homeless issue, first of all, it is extremely challenging, and I do believe that government is not the be-all, end-all. What I would do with this situation is I would call a forum with the city, with the county, with the churches, different advocates, business owners, law enforcement, and any concerned citizens. There's no one-size-fits-all answer with this. There is not a single one-size-fits-all. With the business I've done in this county in the last 10 years, I've gotten to know a lot of our homeless. Personally, some, as Bill said, they are homeless because they want to be homeless. I mean, I know these people really well. Others, unfortunately, are addicted to drugs. Matter of fact, right now as we're talking, I have a friend that's in the hospital on overdose. So there's things we can meet and get together on, and I'd like to do that.
This is a really intractable problem, but I think one of the things we have to acknowledge is that, to some degree, our local churches have been exacerbating it, and that we are not going to come up with a solution, especially one that the city can afford, without including the churches and getting them to change policy, maybe accept mitigation fees for extra police, I don't know. But they are part of the problem. That's about it.
And for the fourth question.
Oh, I get to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
They caught me, good.
Good. What I'll say is that when I was first elected, many of the business owners came to me and talked to me about the issues with the homeless in downtown Sonora. You know, it's okay to be homeless if that's what you choose to be. This is a multi-tentacled problem because we have a large flavor of homeless. We are now starting to see seniors that are becoming homeless. What's the answer? Well, if I had that answer, I could solve homelessness across the nation. We've met for over a year between the city and the county trying to dissect this issue. What we've tried to do is direct the homeless away from hanging out in downtown Sonora at Courthouse Park. We've tried to educate the homeless through the Give Someone a Chance organization who work with the homeless to clean themselves up when they come into the city so that they blend in instead of create a, is that it? Sorry.
All right, and for question number four, Margaret Davis.
Matt, this is for you. Everybody knows that the lifeblood of any community comes from the private sector. How will you attract new businesses to Topeka County?
Well, first of all, I know a lot about the private sector. I get to work in, fortunate enough to work in the largest business in the private sector in the world, so it's really kind of a privilege. You know, I think a lot of, a lot of this comes from building relationships. I remember being asked this two years ago and not quite having the answer, and I guess I don't quite have it now because, again, kind of like the homeless issue, there's not a one-size-fits-all. I think when it comes to empty storefronts, just keeping an eye out, I mean, there's things that our county offers and our city can offer through our Topeka County Economic Development to pull people in. I mean, we've had that happen with- I mean, we've had that happen with Famous Footwear, Joann's, Big Lots, other places like that. Again, I think Larry Cope has done a great thing. I would do anything I can to support the Tuolumne County Economic Development and Larry Cope. I think one of the biggest things we can do to help build business in Sonora and Tuolumne County is shop local, and then find out where those products are coming from that we're shopping local. Sonora's favorite kitchen store, great example, you go in there, you can find lots of products that are made in the United States. Guess where I go when I want something that's made in the U.S.? So, I can shop local in Tuolumne County, that's where I go.
Okay. You need the question again?
No.
Okay.
I think it requires, to some degree, a synergy between government efforts to at least reduce initial taxes, make it more attractive to do business, and the local environment being, when I say environment, the storefronts, the businesses, to be sprucing themselves up and becoming more attractive. There's not a one-size-fits-all solution outside of, you know, more tax cuts and make it the most attractive place financially to do business, but that's, that's hard to do on a reduced budget, especially when we're talking mostly about the city controlling only the sales tax. We don't have much to do with mitigating property tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie?
I like this question. The reason I like it is because it's economic development, and I sat in a meeting today and listened to Larry Cope, our Economic Development Director, say that one of the directions or one of the goals for our Economic Development Authority is to go out and see if they can't find businesses in other areas that would like to duplicate that business here in the city of Sonora. I was 100% for what Doug Kennedy decided to do and get approved for the Beer Garden in downtown Sonora. And if that takes off and is successful, more businesses are going to come in here, and we've got several available storefronts for those businesses.
All right.
Well, as we all, we all know the city is very limited on what space is available for commercial. Now, I'm talking about new buildings, to build a new building. We have the historic section, but we have a lot, we don't have the area, so we're really working with what we have, and I don't think it's, the council is not in the, in the position, at least, but I've been to feel that, we're not in the position to tell the county how they're supposed to do it, and vice versa. But the idea is to make it very clear to businesses that come in, you know, A through B through C, what do you actually have to do? And help them. Don't be in, don't be in their roadblock, but help them. And it's not for us to decide. Anybody that wants to come in, it's their money. If they want to open a business, it's really up to them, and I get it all the time, "Well, you have that store. We don't want you to have another one." That free enterprise is free enterprise.
Actually, if we went that round, was that the fourth round? All right, with that, it's closing statement, two minutes each. We'll start with Connie.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to all of you, and the most, again, the most important thing is economic development. And I think tourism, we have to realize that this county is a tourism county. We have everything that you could possibly want to do up here, if you want to camp, if you want to shop, if you want to go to the theater, if you want to go fishing, et cetera. Tourism is where it's at, and the more we bring in here, the more they spend their dollars, and the more sales tax dollars are generated. We have to make it easy for people to put in businesses, and I will do everything I can at the city to make it easier for people to put in a business going through the permitting process, et cetera. We have a microenterprise program for those people who have never been in business before. If they need help, we have a program that can help them set their business up, teach them what it is it takes to have a successful business, and walk them through the whole process. So, business is important. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, Connie, I'll agree 100% on the business, but also, I'd like to also let people know that the TOT is up, going to be up almost 20% for the city of Sonora this year, and 10% up in the county. That's great, that's a great indicator that people are coming back to Sonora. And it is businesses. It's businesses, it's putting heads in beds, it's, we're tourism, and we need to sell Sonora. And I've used this all the time, Sonora's like a diamond, but if you don't polish it, she'll start to look dingy. Right now, we need to start looking to polish Sonora. At one time, we had some grant funds available, and I was that close to getting them, grants for the, for the business owners, even if you didn't own the business, to do your outside of your building and paint it, put new canopies up. The governor came in and just swiped that money right away from us. That was the redevelopment money of over $2 million. So, it's tough. It's going to be tough, and we're going to get through it, and we will come out better. And you will see, as Sonora, when you see the first part of Vision Sonora, it'll set a theme. It'll also put a lot of people understanding what is trying to be done by the public. We're at the direction of the public, and I keep telling everybody, if you want to change it, get everybody to back together, and say, "Hey, this is the avenue I want to go." But each one of those stages of Vision Sonora will start to bring in more businesses. And we see it with what's happening with Doug Kennedy. He's spending two and a half million dollars on the next phase of his project, employing, I think, 40 people. That's what Sonora needs to grow.
Matt?
Again, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I thank the Chamber for hosting this. You know, I guess in my closing statement, I do want to realize the Vision Sonora plans, starting off with what we can agree on. The homeless issue, my first day elected, I will call a forum with the county and churches and different advocates, business owners, and law enforcement, anyone concerned. That will be done my first day if I'm elected. I have received the Sonora Police Officers Association endorsement. Basically, what that means is I sat down with one of their representatives, told them that I had planned on cutting most of their overtime and doing some other things, and they gave me their endorsement. I'm invested in Sonora. I love Sonora. Again, as being a husband and father of four, I'm going to be here for a long time, and I do think it's time to start passing the torch. Again, there's only one person, my generation up here, so I'm asking for, for your vote. I guess there's not a whole lot else to say, other than if there's any questions, I'm always open and I'm always transparent. There's four good people up here, and four people that have worked hard in the different positions that they have earned. I can't say enough good things about them, honestly. But I am asking for your vote on Election Day. Thank you.
Wow, that's kind of funny to be, the first time I've been called an old person by somebody older than my daughters. But, you know, it's said that brevity is the soul of wit. I would just like to conclude beyond thanking the Chamber, beyond thanking the Chamber, that for simple, modest, and effective government, please vote for the timberfaller, me, Mark Plummer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For our radio audience, you are listening to the Tuolumne County Chamber of Commerce Candidate's Night. We're going to take a four-minute break and return with more candidates on the Motherlode's news station, AM 1450 and FM 102.7 KVML, and streamed on MyMotherload.com. And for now, we'll start that four-minute break.